The Board of Supervisors come out of closed session and reconvene in open session.
Motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Fisher, discussion. Hearing on all is in favor, aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the best of each board member's knowledge that only expansion of an existing business or industry pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A 5 of the Code of Virginia 1950 is amended specifically, discussion concerning the expansion of an existing business or industry where no previous announcement has been made of the business or industry's interest in expanding its facilities in the county.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Lofton, discussion. Hearing now, Supervisor Wells.
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton.
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven.
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher.
Aye.
Supervisor Hess.
Aye.
Supervisor Ranson.
Chairman votes aye and the motion passes.
All right, we will go to our regular agenda now. Supervisor Hess, would you lead us in invocation?
Please bow your heads. Almighty God, we come to you at this moment to give thanks to you for your many blessings and to ask for your guidance as we deal with issues that affect the future of our county and our citizens. Tonight, we're especially thankful for the opportunity to live in this great nation where we enjoy the many freedoms provided for in our Constitution. And as we approach Election Day on November 3rd, we are particularly reminded of the freedom to elect our leaders. We know that our freedoms do not come without sacrifice. Heavenly Father, hold our troops in your loving hands. Protect them as they protect us. Bless them and their families for the selfless acts they perform for us. Almighty God, we are reminded that your great commandment is that we shall love our neighbors as ourselves, and we ask that you hold before us that vision of your will to enlighten our goals and the actions we take tonight. We ask your blessings on those gathered here. Guide us all and give us the strength and desire to continue to serve you, our county, our Commonwealth, and our great nation. In your name we pray. Amen.
Vice Chairman DeHaven leads in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thanks a lot for the pledge, please.
(inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Adoption of the agenda, are there any proposed amendments? Not, is there a motion to approve?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made by Supervisor DeHaven, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Lofton, any discussion? Hearing on all is in favor, aye.
Aye.
Pose no, the agenda is adopted. Proposed for the consent agenda, A, C, and F.
Yes, sir, and I would like to make note of the fact that item C is at your seat with the actual appointee filled in. It's your representative at the VACO meeting, which is me. We neglected to put one filled in in the packet, I apologize for that.
Recommendation is A, C, and F with C on the table.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Supervisor DeHaven, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Hess, discussion. Hearing on all is in favor, aye.
Aye.
Pose no, the motion passes. Next, we have a special presentation by Delegate Minchu. Delegate, have you thought about how we might arrange this? Would you like to call up a guest at the same time?
Mr. Chairman, with leave of the chair, I might have a twofer tonight. Two very special guests, our former county administrator and our sitting sheriff, both of whom are retiring. And with your leave, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to do a double-barrel presentation.
Would those two gentlemen please come forward?
And I might, Mr. Chairman, with your leave also, could my future colleague, former supervisor Chris Collins join me up here? He was with us in spirit when the General Assembly was doing some work this past session, and since he's going to be joining us soon, it's only appropriate, since he's served on this dais, that he join me for this presentation.
Mr. Collins. Welcome back. You missus, don't you?
I've been on this side.
Mr. Chairman, the General Assembly not only makes laws, but we also, given that if you're a Virginian, you love history, and if you love history, you appreciate the work of great men and women who have made our Commonwealth and its counties, cities, and towns great, strong, ethical, and working for the public spirit. And there's two gentlemen that are with us that are stepping down after some service to this great county. And the General Assembly spends some time when we have truly exceptional work of retiring men and women who have served our Commonwealth and local government that we recognize them. And so Senator Vogel and I got together, Mr. Chairman, and because we had these two gentlemen, the Sheriff Bob Williamson and County Administrator John Riley stepping down, we put forward joint commending resolutions in both houses. Now, you probably know that not every piece of legislation clears the House of Delegates and the Senate by unanimous vote, but I'm happy to report that these one did. And that is a testament not only to a bipartisan and bicaramel spirit, but also to the greatness of these two men. So, Mr. Chairman, what I'd like to do is first make a presentation and read to you House Joint Resolution 908 commending John R. Riley Jr., agreed to by the House of Delegates on February 25, 2015, and agreed to by the Senate on February 26, 2015. Whereas John R. Riley Jr., who has ably served as county administrator of Frederick County since 1983, retired on February 1, 2015. And whereas known for his even keeled temperament, John Riley was the Commonwealth's third-longest-tenured active county administrator at the time of his retirement. And whereas John Riley earned a bachelor's degree from Elon College, now Elon University, and a master's degree from Virginia Commonwealth University, he is also a graduate of the University of Virginia Senior Executive Institute. And whereas John Riley was a planner in Augusta, Georgia, and a planning enforcement officer and environmental inspector for Enrico County before beginning his career with Frederick County as Director of Planning and Development. And whereas during his tenure with Frederick County, John Riley has overseen a period of great growth. His scope of responsibilities increased as the county's population grew from approximately 32,500 people three decades ago to nearly 82,000 residents today. And whereas John Riley served as a respected member of the Northern Shenandoah Valley Regional Commission since 1984, willingly offering guidance and advice as he promoted progress and fiscal responsibility. And whereas in Frederick County, John Riley supervised a staff that increased from 174 employees in 1983 to more than 708 employees in 2015, he leaves a legacy of professionalism and a record of accomplishment with, in his words, "very few disappointments" during his years as public service to the city or people of Frederick County. Now therefore be it resolved by the Virginia House of Delegates with the Virginia Senate concurring that John R. Riley Jr. is hereby commended for his outstanding service as county administrator of Frederick County since 1983, and that the clerk of the House of Delegates prepare a copy of this resolution for presentment to Mr. Riley as an expression of the Commonwealth's respect and admiration for his service to the people of Frederick County and our Commonwealth. So, Mr. Chairman, on behalf of a grateful Commonwealth, I would like to give to John Riley, who is at my right, House Joint Resolution 908. And, Mr. Chairman, he needs no introduction in front of this board, but he's a man, when I first started having the opportunity to represent Frederick County, showed me the straight course and how to do the best I could according to the flashlight that God was shining for me to how to serve the people of this great county well. So, he gets not only the appreciation of the Commonwealth, but he gets my deep appreciation too. So, Mr. Riley, we thank you for your work. Mr. Chairman, we would have had it framed, but we figured a piece of legislation like this requires some good Frederick County wood that might not have been available down at Ritz.
Words, Mr. Riley?
It's nice to be back, thank you.[576.16][576.16](laughter) Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, as I mentioned, this was a double-barrel presentation. I appreciate the leave of the chair allowing me to take some of your time for this. But in addition to Mr. Riley's stepping down, we are seeing our great constitutional officer, Sheriff Bob Williamson, stepping down. And the same story happened with this resolution. Senator Vogel and I put it together, and it went through both houses without any debate and with full unanimous recommendation. Mr. Chairman, this is House Joint Resolution 900 commending Robert T. Williamson, agreed to by the House of Delegates February 24, 2005, and agreed to by the Senate on February 26, 2015. Whereas Robert T. Williamson, a faithful servant of the public and law enforcement officer, retires as sheriff of Frederick County in December of 2015 after more than four decades of service. And whereas Robert Williamson began his career in law enforcement in the early 1970s as a jailer in Frederick County, he later transferred to the Frederick County Sheriff's Office where he rose through the ranks and held numerous leadership positions. And whereas first elected sheriff in 1992, Sheriff Robert Williamson has served for six terms and has led his department into the 21st century, adopting to many changes in technology, criminal justice, and procedures. And whereas during his tenure as sheriff, Sheriff Williamson has ensured that his officers received the best equipment and training to uphold their mission to serve and protect members of the public. And whereas earning a reputation for fairness and honesty, Sheriff Williamson has been a trusted mentor to countless young law enforcement officers. And whereas after his well-earned retirement, Sheriff Williamson plans to spend more time with his family and seek new opportunities to serve his community. Now therefore be it resolved by the House of Delegates with the Senate concurring that the General Assembly hereby commend Sheriff Robert T. Williamson of Frederick County, Virginia, on the occasion of his retirement of sheriff, and be it resolved that the clerk of the House of Delegates prepare a copy of this resolution for presentment to Sheriff Robert T. Williamson as an expression of the General Assembly's deep and abiding admiration for his service and contributions to the Frederick County community. Mr. Chairman, on behalf of grateful Commonwealth, once again, I'd like to recognize our outstanding sheriff and present him with this copy of House Joint Resolution 900.[737.13][737.13](applause)
I'm sorry? Any words?
No, no, you don't want to get me started.[755.91][755.91](laughter)
I'm going to come around, ask the board members to follow me, and anybody else at the table who would like to, we have some handshaking to do.
You're welcome.
Dooley deserved.
We'll let the board have their moments.
And thank you in the House and the Senate.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I will yield back. Thank you very much for this opportunity to be here.
All right, next is citizen comments for agenda items only. Did anyone sign up?
Yes, sir. The first person is Ann B. Lloyd.
Come forward, give your name, magisterial district, and limit your comments to three minutes, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Ms. Bull and I would like to take this opportunity to be heard on our request for supplements in the amount of $200 per month per employee for the district courts of Frederick County. And we come to you asking for this because our courts have experienced high turnover in personnel, which in turn have had an effect on the judicial system as it causes delay in getting litigants to courts, delays in processing court paperwork, and has an impact on the collection of fines and costs. We also have had a huge increase in caseloads due to the drug issues in our localities. We want to share these points with you this evening. The average salary of the district court employees is much lower than other state and local employees. Our deputy clerks earn less than people in the employment of the county and city who have jobs that require much less education and have far less responsibilities. The Supreme Court did a recent study showing that 92.3% of district court employees earn less than the state average for state employees. Locally, the district court employees start at about $2,500 less than the circuit court deputies in similar positions. All of these employees work hard, both circuit and district, and they should be treated equally. While the average state salaries have risen 34% over the last 10 or so years, the district court salaries have only risen 13%. We've made this plea to the city and county for the past three years, as the Code of Virginia changed at that time, allowing us to have supplements at the district court level. The city refuses to help us, thus we come to you again, asking that you afford us some supplements as you have given to the Frederick County Circuit Court. The Circuit Court of Frederick County did not go under the county payroll until 2002, and according to my good friend and fellow clerk Rebecca Hogan, up until that time, Frederick County did pay those employees a supplement, although they were state employees only, paid by the Compensation Board. Those supplements continue, however, and range now from $1,800 to $422.09 per month per employee. These staff members serve the same citizens, law enforcement bar, and judges that our staff does. They work in the same building and often eat lunch at the same table. Our request is simply for $200 per employee per month from you. The district courts submit local fines and costs to the locality. Last year, we collected in excess of $2,784,000. The Circuit Court has a 5% clerk's commission authorized by state on all local collections we collect for them. At the end of the year, if there are excess fees, they are remitted back to the locality. And according to our very capable and kind finance director Cheryl Schifler, last year the county received $67,173 in excess fees, which would more than cover our request. To further show our plight, we learned on Friday that a presentation by the Supreme Court of Virginia that the Frederick Winchester JDR Court is currently only staffed at 67%, and the General District Court is only staffed at 75%. You can imagine the difficulty in keeping courts rolling when you have such shortages on top of low salaries. To end this and keep it brief, we'd like to close by saying our staff, and many of them are here this evening, are extremely hardworking, dedicated, and they go beyond what should be expected of them. The majority of people coming to the circuit courts have attorneys, unlike the district courts, who deal with hundreds of pro se litigants each week. Our courts do our very best to serve these litigants and help them through the maze of the judicial system. Please support us so that we may, in turn, support the citizens of this fine county. On behalf of our staffs and ourselves, we thank each of you.
Anyone else?
The second individual is Deborah Bull, which I'm assuming you've seated her. The third one is Blaine Dunn.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, you heard a nice presentation for a need. In the spring, you ran a budget, and that budget began July 1st. My question to you is, and it's a rhetorical question, is what has changed that is so significant that you need a supplemental appropriation now? If the need that Mr. Ranson is laying out is really fundamental, can it not be addressed in the next budget process in which you can lay out the cost that you have, where the money's going to come from, et cetera? The issue is not on the merits of whether this is a good situation or a bad situation, whether you as a board are willing to go and stand by the budget you have unless you have a significant difference or a significant need. And I don't see that as a taxpayer. If the clerks here in this room work through next June, and if you as a board turn around and say what they do have a need, you can give them a supplemental one-time dollar amount, which would accommodate the $200 times X number of months times people. But I would just encourage you to stick to the budget from a taxpayer viewpoint and address this issue in the next budget. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else?
No, sir.
Bart, are there any Board of Supervisors' comments? Hearing none, we'll move on to the minutes of the regular meeting, September 9, 2015.
It was the consent item, minutes.
We already did the minutes.
Consent.
Did the minutes on the consent.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm not used to that one yet. Many appointments. We have a lot there. Lord Fairfax Community College Board, you have a recommendation before you on the table. Chair would appreciate endorsement of that recommendation.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chairman DeHaven, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Hess, discussion. Hearing on all is in favor, aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Then Jay Douglas McCarthy is appointed to the Lord Fairfax Community College Board. Social Services Board, Stonewall, are we ready?
No, sir. Can we advertise that one?
Yes, ma'am.
This has gone on for several months now with zero success.
Okay.
Parks and Recreation, Redbutter, are we ready?
No, sir.
Northwestern Community Services Board, we actually have two, one here to replace resignations and one to endorse. So, this is one that has resigned, and we need a person. I do not think we have people. The letter from the Services Board, Mr. Gleason, I said wanted to know if we wanted his help. I think maybe that would be a good idea. So if you could handle that, Madam County Administrator, and see if Mr. Gleason can come up with a couple people.
Okay.
If any of you have people, let me know. It's an important, not glorious job, but very important. Extension Leadership Council, Member-at-Large, they have expanded their at-large membership and have made a recommendation. What's the pleasure to board?
Mr. Chairman, I would recommend that Dr. Robert Meadows be appointed as a Member-at-Large to the Extension Leadership Council.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
We have a second, discussion. Hearing on all is in favor, aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Then Dr. Robert Meadows is appointed to the Extension Leadership Council as a Member-at-Large. Shawnee Sanitary District Advisory Committee, are we ready?
Yes, sir. Well, let's say half-ready. Mr. Hugh Van Meter has indicated that he is willing to continue to serve on that committee. I've reached out to Ms. Viviano, I have not heard back from her, so I would defer that till the next meeting when I can get in contact with her to find out her wishes. So, but at this time, I would recommend that we reappoint Hugh B. Van Meter to the Shawnee Land Sanitary District Committee.
All right, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Hess, discussion. Hearing on all is in favor, aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Then Hugh B. Van Meter is reappointed to the Shawnee Land Sanitary District Advisory Committee. Next is the Hanley Regional Library Board is a Frederick County representative. I believe we need a person. This person's not eligible, correct, for reappointment?
Correct, yes.
I have not worked on this. I think any of you who know of somebody, it would be a good idea, Supervisor Wells, you serve on the board.
I can help you out with that.
Can you help me out on that one?
Yes, sir.
We best not to let it be vacant anymore, we have to.
Okay.
Here's the other Northwest, another Northwest Community Services Board. We have a resignation, so we'll seek candidates. However, Mr. Brubaker has agreed to be reappointed, if that's the board's choice. Also, the Northwestern Community Services Board.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we have a motion by Supervisor Fisher, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Lofton, discussion. Hearing on all is in favor, aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Then Tom Brubaker is reappointed to the Northwestern Community Services Board. Board of Equalization, we make a recommendation to the Circuit Court Judge, the current member is Timothy W. McKee. I believe he will reserve if asked and appointed. What is your, do you wish to recommend?
I would like to see.
We have a motion by Supervisor Wells and a second by Supervisor Hess to recommend appointment. All is in favor, aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Timothy W. McKee will be recommended for reappointment to the Board of Equalization. Likewise, the Board of Zoning Appeals, John D. Klein.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move that we reappoint Mr. John D. Klein to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Stonewall, recommend him to the court.
Okay, we have a motion to recommend his appointment, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second, best Supervisor Lofton, discussion. Hearing on all is in favor, aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Then John D. Klein will be recommended for reappointment. Next, we have the Extension Leadership Council, Margaret Douglas, Back Creek, is we ready?
Yes, sir. Mrs. Douglas is willing to be reappointed, and as you know, she has done an outstanding job in this role, and I would recommend Margaret B. Douglas be reappointed to the Extension Leadership Council.
I'm not sure we'd let her resign. Is there a second?[1492.74][1492.74](laughter) Second. Second by Supervisor Fisher, discussion. Hearing on all is in favor, aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Margaret B. Douglas is reappointed to Extension Leadership Council. Next is Rose G. McDonald, Gainesboro.
Mr. Chairman, I move to reappoint Rose McDonald to the Extension Leadership Council.
We have a motion to reappoint, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Lofton, discussion. Hearing on all is in favor, aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Rose G. McDonald is reappointed to the Extension Leadership Council. And lastly, Raymond P. Cross.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that Raymond P. Cross be reappointed to the Extension Leadership Council.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Lofton, discussion. Hearing on all is in favor, aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Raymond P. Cross is reappointed to the Extension Leadership Council. I believe that does it. Oh, no, no. We have one more item. The chairman would like to add another person to public safety, Jerry, and I hope I get this out wrong, I think he forgives me when I mess it up, Zem Lachenco. Jerry, Jerry, well, I shouldn't have did it twice. Anyway, the chair would like for you to place him at my request on the Public Safety Committee. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Supervisor DeHaven, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Hess, discussion. Hearing on all is in favor, aye.
Aye.
Pose no. He is appointed. All right. Next, the consent agenda item, a request for commissioner of revenue refunds.
Yes, sir.
Would you lead us?
We have five of those. Do you want me to do them one by one?
Unless the board objects, I would try to put them all together. What's your pleasure? You'll have to state the amounts separately, and the motion will have to put them separately. But I think if you can shorten it up, it would be a good thing.
Okay. The first one is a request to refund the Daimler Trust in the amount of $8,678.65 for prorated personal property taxes in 2014 and 15, and a license fee in 2014. The second one is a refund to Aqua Lake Holiday Utilities Incorporated in the amount of $2,759.46 for utility taxes for 2012, 13, 14, and 15. The third is to ProBuild Company LLC in the amount of $13,282.35 for business license taxes in 2015. The fourth one is to Lawrence Fabrications Incorporated in the amount of $6,532.96 for prorated personal property taxes in 2011 through the first half of 2015, and license fees for 2011 through 15. And the final one is to Washington Gas in the amount of $89,696.59 for consumer use taxes in 2014 and 15. And the county attorney has reviewed those requests and noted that they are in order.
Are there questions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. On the ProBuild Company LLC and their taxes, is that because they left the area, they closed the business?
It says the refund resulted from the taxpayer's business being changed to another entity, so it changed names. New ownership's already been filed, and the financial impact in the change is less than $300 net.
Gotcha. That's what I was wondering.
Refunding it in one name and they're paying it in another name.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
That's correct.
Are there questions? What is the pleasure of the board?
Chairman, I move for approval of the commissioner's request.
All right, we have a motion to approve and the appropriation.
Yes, and the appropriation, I'm sorry.
And the appropriation, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Hess, any discussion? Hearing none. Supervisor Ranson.
Yes.
Supervisor Hess.
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher.
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven.
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton.
Aye.
Supervisor Wells.
Aye.
Chairman votes aye and the motion passes. Next is a resolution rejecting unsolicited proposal under the Public Private Educational Facilities and Infrastructure Act of 2002 from Frederick County Center LLC.
You have a resolution in your packet that the board needs to pass in order for us to provide the requested refund on the unsolicited PPEA project. We can't refund the money that was deposited for the project unless the board officially
Project's dead, we've got the deposit, they're doing it, but there were some expenses. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to adopt a resolution to reject the solicited, unsolicited proposal.
All right, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Fisher, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. All right. Human Resources Committee report.
Mr. Chairman, the Human Resources Committee met at 8:00 a.m. on Friday, October the 9th. The committee received and considered a request from the Commissioner of Revenue to add two new positions for assessors in order to complete the real estate assessment that needs to be completed next year. The committee recommended approval of the request, and I would so move. I would also like to note that the Finance Committee also considered the request at their meeting on October 21st and supported the request by transfer of funds from contingency funds.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Wells, this is a motion to create the positions. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, one other item I'd like to add to the committee's report. I know that the Board members and most of the public are aware of the resignation of the county's HR Director, Paula Knott-Singer. As Chairman of the Human Resources Committee, I wanted to take a moment to say how sorry I am for Paula to be leaving the county, and to commend her for the outstanding job she's done despite minimal resources being available to her and her staff. It is certainly a loss for Frederick County, and I just want to make public note of that.
How many years do you, no?
Nine, I believe, Mr. Chairman.
More than 10, I believe, and I'm not sure.
I certainly think it would be appropriate to draft a resolution of appreciation on behalf of the Board and let us approve it at next meeting, if you would be kind enough to do so.
That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
All right, next is Finance Committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a carryover from the August Finance Committee discussion, and it's a request for a $19,000 supplement for the county's half of a $200 a month salary supplement for the 19 clerks of the General District Court and the Juvenile and Domestic Relations Court for the remaining 10 months of physical year 16. The committee recommends denial, Mr. Chairman, and I would so move.
All right, we have a motion to deny. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I have a few comments to make on this motion, if that's appropriate, before we vote.
We have a motion and a second, we're in the discussion, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman and members of the Board, I am in absolute favor for approving this general supplementation for our district court clerks. A real problem is happening in our district court clerks at the juvenile level and at the general district level, and that number-one problem is turnover. Each court is averaging a loss of three deputy clerks each year. And the reason for the turnover is the low pay. The district court clerks, their average starting salary is approximately $27,000. And that's not, that's a very low amount of money, given the demands of the job, given their requirements for their education and skill. And in all honesty, if you look at the other state salaries, it's much lower than animal control officers and garbage collectors, which don't have the duties and the responsibilities that our court clerks have, much less the demands of the skills and retirements. When you have a high turnover in our court system, which I regularly see as a practicing attorney over there, it affects the judges, the attorneys, the staff, and the overall efficiency of the judicial system. Let's not forget that these district courts are an income-generating production body. Each year, they bring in millions and millions of dollars for the county in revenue. They generate more revenue, I think, than the Circuit Court clerks, which we supplement. We do supplement the Circuit Court clerks, the deputy clerks. What the district court clerks are asking for is much less than what we supplement the Circuit Court clerks. They're understaffed. The General Assembly has afforded more money for judges, but there hasn't been any allocation whatsoever for our district court clerks, which means that they're working longer and harder hours to keep up. When they have to hire new clerks, it takes eight or nine months to get them trained, which causes a delay in the entire system, which requires the other staffs to work longer hours and even on weekends to compensate. It's only fair and equitable that we do the same for the general district court clerks as we do the Circuit Court clerks. Now, I constantly hear that they should wait till the next budget cycle and ask for it. Well, with all due respect, they've been doing that year after year after year, and they always get turned down. My position on supplemental payments is, if they ask for it in the budget, and they should have got it, and they really need it, and we have the money to do it, we should give them the supplemental pay. Each year, the State Compensation Board, as there was an email provided to all members that the State Compensation Board and the state gives back to the county a certain amount of money that the district courts have generated. And I think last year, it was $61,000, which is much less than the supplement they're asking for per year. It's only fair and equitable that we give them the supplement, we do it for the Circuit Court clerks. I've heard the argument that, well, we don't do it because they're not county employees. Well, from the 1970s to 2001, the Frederick County Circuit Court clerks were state employees, and we still provided them supplement. It doesn't matter if they're technically a state employee, we should still supplement them because it's the right thing to do. We supplement our Commonwealth attorney and our assistant Commonwealth attorneys. They're paid, they're basically paid by the state compensation, or we pay them. We're reimbursed by the State Compensation Board, and we supplement the Commonwealth attorney. We supplement all the assistant Commonwealth attorneys, and they're basically state employees, but we supplement them as well. These district court clerks work hard, they're underpaid, and it's the right thing to do.
The other discussion.
This may be a rhetorical question. Where's the Commonwealth's responsibility in this?
I think the delegate meant you left.
How convenient. And one other question I might have is how the, these salary levels might compare with comparable level of responsibility for a departmental employee here in the county.
And is anybody prepared to answer that question tonight?
I can only add that there, the skill level is comparable to private sector paralegals, secretaries, which make $40,000 to $50,000 a year, so our deputy clerks make half of that. And that's a big problem, is our deputy clerks, a lot of them will leave to go to the private sector because they can double their pay.
Other discussion.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I certainly agree with Mr. Ranson's comments about the low pay and the hard work of these folks. They, he couldn't be more on target. However, as much as I would like us to do something, I still feel like this is a budget item and should come into the budget, and I think we need to take a hard look at that. There's been a request by our new chairman and our new county administrator to get all of our things together and get them in reasonable time now, and I think this should be one of those items that goes on that list and that we should look very hard at in the next budget and take care of it at that time.
Other discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Lofton.
I agree with the comments that have been made, both pro and con, and I do know that those ladies in there work very, very hard. But I've been fairly consistent about between budget cycle appropriations. I don't think it's a good idea. I am in line with Mr. Hess's comments. The Commonwealth seems to be pushing more and more down to the local level, and that distresses me. And I'd like to see, I don't know if there's any way we could do that, change that, but certainly, I think it needs to be changed, but I agree with Supervisor Wells. This is a budget item, and certainly with the information that we have now, maybe a different viewpoint would be taken in the next budget cycle, but that's where I'm willing to address this.
Other discussion.
I just might like to add that including it in a budget cycle this next go-around as opposed to previous years, at least a short time I've been here, at least I've got more information regarding these positions, and I think, at least in my mind, I might be much more willing to respond in a positive manner to including that in the budget. But I agree with the off-budget cycle concerns.
Discussion.
Just a comment, Mr. Chairman. It might be beneficial if we could ask the HR Committee to look at this. The other issue connected with this is that that's quite a bit more increase at one time than most of our 700 employees have ever seen. And there was great sympathy for the work that folks do under the conditions you do it under. I think that asking HR to look at that in comparison to similar levels of current employees and develop some thoughts that might help us along that line in the budget process would be worthwhile.
I think the committee would be more than happy to consider that.
Other discussion. Well, I have a comment. I've been a three- or four-year supporter of this effort, and I don't have another budget cycle to vote in. This is it. So I will be voting to not support the request to deny, because it's my last hurrah at it, and perhaps, no matter how it goes, somebody will remember the vote, and it's time to help these people out. So, are we ready to vote?
One more thing. Given the suggestion that this go to the HR Committee, could we perhaps delay, delay a vote on this until after the committee's had a chance to look at it?
Like if you get enough votes.
Just kind of asking what the sentiment might be.
Anybody in favor of delaying? I don't see support for that.
I'm in favor if there's hopes I can get it approved.
Can't guarantee that.
There's still hope, so I'm in favor of that.
Okay, I don't think we have enough support for a delay. We have a motion and a second, are we ready to vote? Supervisor, this is a motion to deny. So yes means deny, no means something else. Supervisor Ranson?
No.
Supervisor Hess?
Yes.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
And the chairman votes no. So the motion does pass, it is denied. Another budget cycle will be different. Next item, Finance Report of September 16, 2015.
That was one we just dealt with, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, I'm sorry, October 21st.
Yes, sir. And so, item number one and item number two were approved under consent, and I would so move.
A motion to, I'm sorry, I'm trying to get the page, which numbers?
One and two, sir.
One and two under consent agenda, is there a second?
And eight.
One, two, and eight under consent agenda, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
We have a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Then the consent agenda, one, two, and eight is approved.
Item number four, Mr. Chairman. County Attorney provide information on the discussion on tax-exempt property organizations. The committee recommends removing number 19 from the proposed ordinance and adoption of the ordinance otherwise as amended. I would so move.
Your motion to approve, is there a second?
Are we, we're not approving the ordinance, are we?
We're sitting at a public hearing. I'm sorry.
I hit the wrong button, got the wrong page, and so if you'll give me a minute, I get back to the right place. It'd be very helpful.
We actually skipped one. The matter you dealt with, where you took a vote on the supplements, was number three, item H. J is October 21, which is what you're looking at, so we've got to go back and pick up September 16. There've been two Finance Committee meetings.
We'll catch up with that one as well, thank you.
All right, now where are we?
So we're on J.
To, J is where we were.
Right, J is where you are.
And you want to go back to I?
Back to I after you finish J.
Well, we're not finished J, but let's go finish I, and then we'll go back to J. Now. Which, which one did, the only thing that was in I, I'm sorry.
What did we miss?
Is I September 16?
Yes.
Yes. What else is left there? It was a carryforward item.
It was the carryforward, I think, is all that was there. Ms. Garten said we missed something, and I'm not sure, because now my machine wants to stay on J. This thing's aggravating.
On the Finance Committee report for September 16, you've got item number two and three that need to be acted on. And also, seven, eight?
Seven, eight, nine, 10.
Nine, 10.
Yeah, because I think the other item came from August.
Yeah.
The Board hasn't met.
Because your first meeting of the month was canceled and delayed to this meeting, you've got two Finance Committee reports, that's why there's two on there.
Yeah, the item we, the item we dealt with came, I believe, from the August meeting.
Okay, I'm sorry, I managed to get there. So, item number two, from the September 16, 2015 meeting, 16th. Frederick County Public Schools Finance Director requests a school operating fund and general fund supplemental appropriation in the amount of $123,737.4. Amount represents unspent obligated physical year 15 school operating funds. The committee recommends approval, and I'd so move.
Your motion to approve, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Supervisor Ranson?
Yes.
Chairman votes aye, and the motion passes.
Item number three was Frederick County Public Schools Finance Director requests a school capital projects fund and a general fund supplemental appropriation in the amount of $314,746.72. This amount represents unspent physical year 15 school operating funds. Committee recommends approval, and I'd so move.
Your motion to approve, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Hess, discussion. Hearing none, Supervisor Ranson?
Yes.
Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Chairman votes aye, and the motion passes.
Item numbers five and six were both approved under consent, and I would so move.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, discussion. Hearing none, Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Supervisor Ranson?
Yes.
Chairman votes aye, and the motion passes.
Item number seven, the Fire and Rescue Chief requests a general fund supplemental appropriation, dang it. In the amount of $40,000. This amount represents a carryforward of unspent physical year 15 funds to be used for outfitting three new vehicles. The committee recommends approval, and I would so move.
Your motion to approve, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Fisher, discussion. Hearing none, Supervisor Ranson?
Yes.
Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Chairman votes aye, and the motion passes.
Item number eight, the Fire and Rescue Chief requests a general fund supplemental appropriation in the amount of $64,000. This amount represents a carryforward of unspent physical year 15 funds to be used to outfit 10 new employees. The committee recommends approval, and I would so move.
Your motion to approve, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Hess, discussion. Hearing none, Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Supervisor Ranson?
Yes.
Chairman votes aye, and the motion passes. Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Supervisor Ranson?
Yes.
Chairman votes aye and the motion passes.
Item number nine, during the fiscal year 16 budget discussions, there was a request that two outside agencies be revisited after the fiscal year 15 year end. Those agencies were the Hanley Library and the Northern Shandau Valley Regional Commission. The Hanley Library was discussed at the August committee meeting. The budget information for the Frederick, for the Northern Shandau Valley Regional Commission was included. The committee recommends approval of a general fund supplemental appropriation in the amount of $1,216. And I would so move.
You have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Hess, discussion. Hearing on Supervisor Wells?
No.
Supervisor Lofton?
No.
Supervisor DeHaven?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
No.
Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Supervisor Ranson?
Yes.
Chairman votes aye and the motion passes.
Item number 10 is the EDA Director requests EDA Fund supplemental appropriation in the amount of $100,000. This amount represents the incentive funds for O.N. Minerals Chemstone. The committee recommends approval and I would so move.
You have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Lofton, discussion. Hearing on Supervisor Ranson?
Yes.
Supervisor Hess?
Yes.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Chairman votes aye and the motion passes.
Item number 11, the EDA Director requests an EDA Fund supplemental appropriation in the amount of $250,000. This amount represents incentive funds for HP Hood. The committee recommends approval and I would so move.
Motion to approve, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Lofton, discussion. Hearing on Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
No.
Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Supervisor Ranson?
Yes.
Chairman votes aye and the motion passes.
That concludes the report for the 16th, Mr. Chairman, and with your indulgence, we'll move back to the October 21st.
Yes, sir.
2015 meeting.
Pause till we get there.
Yes, sir.
Is everybody else there? Okay, go ahead.
I think we were about to consider item number seven. The Finance Audit Committee Charter adopted by the Board of Supervisors requires an annual review and assessment. The committee's request to survey distributed to members and a summary of the results. The committee recommends approval of the charter with no changes. The committee also recommends increasing involvement with the internal audit for the It's information, I don't know that there's any action necessary. Was there?
Don't believe, looks like it.
So that would bring us to the end of the October 21st report.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman.
What about eight? We already did that?
Can I ask a question, please? Did we take a vote on the motion to move the item forward to public hearing?
Item number four.
Yes, we did.
No, there was a motion, but when the second was asked, Mr. Hess had a question as to what the procedure was, and then we went back to the September meeting, so item four needs to be disposed of.
We did not get a vote on item number four?
No, sir.
Okay. Shall I repeat that, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, please.
So the county attorney provided information, discussion on tax-exempt property organizations, and a recommended ordinance. And the committee recommended the ordinance as amended by removing number 19 from the proposed ordinance. And it was to forward the proposed ordinance to public hearing as amended, and I would so move.
All right, we have a motion to send to public hearing, is there a second? Second by Supervisor Lofton, discussion. Hearing on all is in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion passes. Now, did we get both meetings taken care of?
All three, I believe.
All three? We're sure?
I think so.
I think we're good.
Number eight?
Thank you all.
We approved under consent.
Right.
Okay. Thank you, staff, for your help as we.
Ms. Schiffler's packing up, so I think that's a good sign.
Thank the board for their indulgence and patience.
Thank you.
Okay, you're up again with the Transportation Committee.
It's going to take this thing a moment to get there. Trouble getting it together. All right, Mr. Chairman, thank you, sir. Item number one is the Valley Pike Shawnee Drive Intersection Improvement Study. There were four alternatives that were recommended. The committee reviewed those. They were varying levels of lane improvements, additions to lighting, and this is at the intersection of Valley Avenue and Shawnee Drive. The motion was made and seconded to recommend a phased approach, beginning with alternative one and ending with alternative two B. And I would so move, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Fisher, discussion. Hearing on all is in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries.
The second discussion was House Bill Two outlined projects in preparation for application in the upcoming application period. The projects that were listed were Route 11 North at Exit 317, construction of 37 from Exit 310 to Route 522, restoration of Route 277 improvements to the plan, Route 11 South intersection with Apple Valley Road intersection improvements, Fox Drive, Fox Drive at Route 522 turn lane improvements, and Teva Street Extension and Bridge over I-81. Staff noted, given the current activity on a Russell 150, that application number six should probably be tabled at this time. The committee recommended the list as stated with removing item number six. And I would so move.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Hess, discussion.
There is a resolution at your seat, I believe.
All right, the motion is to approve the resolution.
Yes.
Second is to approve the resolution. Supervisor Hess?
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion? Just one more way to get it turned down, I think, but let's try it and see.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, a question. If we remove number six, let's say that we were successful in getting money for all six projects. And if we found out we did not need the money for number six, could that money be transferred to another needy project at that time, or would it just go away?
It would go back. We might could ask to transfer it. It's sort of an unknown commodity now, it's first application cycle.
Bishop, if you want to help? I think the query is, should we be dropping number six? If you think that's a good idea, tell us why. If you think maybe it wasn't a good idea, be bold enough to say so.
Yeah, I believe it was a good idea, given the activity that's taking place, specifically because VDOT felt like it was a good idea, too. They didn't think we should proceed with it, given what was going on. Neither did we, given the status that we were and your recent decision to maintain the revenue sharing dollars on that project. To address Mr. Lofton's question, if you were to get funded through House Bill Two, you could potentially transfer those revenue sharing funds to other projects, yes.
My thought being that it's always better to ask for as much as you can, noting that you probably won't get that much, but if you were successful in getting that, then you have money that if it evolved, that the Teva Street Extension and Bridge, money was not needed there, we would have funds to transfer to another project, and we have, I'm sure, other projects that we could likely transfer this money to.
Sir, you're kind of saying VDOT recommended we drop it?
It was VDOT's recommendation, I agreed. We must remember that these projects each stand on their own merit, but they also compete against each other. And since we already had multiple high-dollar projects that we were applying for in the form of Route 37 over to 522 and 277 itself, the thought was, all of a sudden, if this one beats out one of those others, at least this one we're getting lined up, we believe, to have matching dollars on. So we didn't really feel like it was our best position to be in to have those projects competing against each other, in addition to all the other projects in the district.
I'm not sure you.
It's a conundrum.
Yeah. Give us any other help. I'm afraid the query still makes some sense, that Mr. Lofton is making about why not ask. Work out a little harder?
Given the guidance that's been previously received, that project was not applied for. The previous free application, the previous, the other five applications have been submitted. That application was not submitted, based on the guidance I received, not only from the Transportation Committee, but even prior to the Transportation Committee.
But how did you get on the list, then?
Because earlier on in the process, and in previous updates, we were looking at that as a potential project.
You'd be hard-pressed to get it in now?
I would be very hard-pressed to get it in now, yes.
Okay. Did that help?
Yeah, that helps, thanks.
Thanks. All right, what's, did we do the motion in a second yet?
We had a second?
We're in discussion. Any other discussion? Are we ready to vote? All is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries.
Please my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. The next item is a public hearing on a proposed conveyance of an evasion easement to the Winchester Regional Airport Authority. Who is handling or presenting?
Deal with it, Mr. Chairman. We're actually seeking two actions here. The first is.
Let's do the public hearing first.
Yes.
I'm with you, but let's do the public hearing.
All right, the public hearing is related to a deed of easement. It's actually a deed restriction that would be placed on property now owned by the county. This is Millwood Station and Event Center property as a condition of the lease, which is the other action we're asking for. The airport authority is requesting or requiring as a condition of the lease, an evasion easement over that portion of property that covers both the station and the event center. And they reference in the easement, federal regulation part 77, which is rather complicated, but basically what it does is restricts the height of any structure or other surface-attached property items on the property. The restrictions, as it applies to this particular property, are actually less restrictive than the zoning requirement that exists in the B2 zoning. So from the staff's perspective, it's not, we're not giving up much in the way of rights on the property. So that is the item that is up for the public hearing, Mr. Chairman.
Questions? Our hearing now will conduct a public hearing on proposed conveyance of an evasion easement to the Winchester Regional Airport Authority on the real property known as the Millwood Station Volunteer Fire and Rescue and Millwood Station Event Center located at 250 and 252 Costello Drive, Winchester, Virginia, and identified by Frederick County Property Identification Numbers 64-10-5A and 64-10-5B. The hearing is pursuant to the Virginia Code 15.2-1800, and the purpose of the hearing is to receive public comment on the conveyance of the evasion easement to the Winchester Regional Airport Authority. Is there anyone here who would like to speak either for or against the proposed conveyance of an evasion easement? Anyone? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Are we have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Wells, any discussion? Hearing on Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Supervisor Ranson?
Yes.
Chairman votes aye and the motion passes. Next, we have a request that did not require a public hearing to approve a parking lot lease agreement.
Again, Mr. Chairman, this is associated with the same property. When the county acquired Millwood Station and the Event Center, the station previously had a lease with the airport authority that covered a portion of the Event Center parking lot. As the current owner of that property, we need to get a like lease on that same piece of ground. The terms of the lease that has already been executed by the authority and simply needs the county's approval at this point is a five-year term. It's a $300 a year for five years, it increases $100 each year, and then there's an opportunity for three, five-year renewals on that lease. So we're requesting approval of a resolution that would grant the county administrator authorization to enter into that lease agreement.
Questions? Best deal you could get? Best deal you could get?
I'm afraid so. We did try.
All right, what's the pleasure of the board?
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Hess, discussion. Hearing on all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Whoops, yes, that wasn't a public hearing item, thank you. Next is a public hearing conditional use permit, 02-15 for James and Susan Brown for a kennel. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Now, this is a request for a kennel for breeding and sale of dogs for property located at 719 Barde Lane. It's in a Back Creek Magisterial District, and its zoning is RA, and the use is residential. The surrounding properties are also zone RA rural areas, and their land uses are vacant and residential, respectively. If I could turn your attention to the map on your left, this is a kind of a wide-eyed aerial photograph of where the property is located on Barde Lane, and I'll zoom in a little closer for you. And the red circle is where the property, so it sits right in the middle of a 154-acre parcel on Barde Lane, excuse me. Kennels are permitted use in the rural areas, zoning district, an approved conditional use permit. This proposed use, again, will take place on 154-acre parcel adjacent to existing residences there. The properties meeting adjacent to this proposed conditional use permit are also zoned RA rural areas, with the nearest residential dwelling being approximately 500,000 feet from this proposed kennel. The applicant will be utilizing a 34-by-12-foot enclosed kennel for adult dogs. They'll be also using a 12-by-24-foot building for storage and two 10-by-16-foot kennels for whelping and weaning of the dogs in the rear of the property. There will be a fenced area for the dogs located also in the rear of the property. This proposed kennel will not be used for boarding dogs, just for breeding. Should the Board of Supervisors find this kennel be appropriate, the planning commission at their September meeting recommended approval, or, excuse me, recommend the following conditions be assigned to this conditional use permit. Number one, all agency requirements should be complied with at all times. Number two, this conditional use permit is solely enabled for the breeding of dogs on this property. Number three, no more than 20 adult dogs should be permitted on the property at any given time. Number four, no employees on those residing on the property shall be allowed. Number five, all the dogs shall be controlled not to create a nuisance to any adjoining property owners or on free or barking. Number six, all dogs must be confined indoors between 9:00 PM and not let outdoors prior to 8:00 AM. Number seven, any proposed cottage, any proposed business sign shall conform to our cottage occupation sign requirements and shall not exceed four square feet in size and five feet in height. feet in height. And condition number eight, with any expansion or modification, this use will require the approval of a new conditional use permit. Mr. Chairman, Mr. and Mrs. Brown are here to answer any questions you or any of the board members we have on this proposed conditional use permit for a kennel for breeding of dogs, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you or any members may have. Thank you.
Questions, the staff? Thanks, sir. Is the, would the applicant like to speak?
Mr. Chairman and board, it's, it's, I'm grateful to be able to stand before you representing myself and my wife and my family. Thank you for your time and the excellent job that you all do in the various different positions and responsibilities that you have. I also stand saying this, that the only and main reason that we're able to be here tonight is by the grace of God. I was telling Mr. Lofton when he came out to visit us that we never really intended to see from a personal point of view of, of vision, if you will, starting out. We just both came from farming backgrounds, loved to do this, and we decided we would try our hands at it, and God has given the increase. I can't, I can't make my, my girls pregnant, the dogs. I can't, I can't determine the number of puppies in each litter. I'm not the one who makes the phone call ring or the emails come in for these puppies. I am, I am, my wife and my family are literally middlemen in this, and we've asked God to bless us, and he has, and, and we're thankful because we are equally blessed to be in this county and equally blessed to be before you, to, to get your approval, to get your wisdom and your counsel on where we go with this as a business. So thank you again for your time. If you have any questions about, Attorney Mike or Mark had asked a question before, what is whelping? Whelping is, and I didn't answer that, whelping is the birthing of puppies, of which we have one cottage that is totally dedicated to that. So any other questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Questions of the applicant?
Yes, sir. I believe that the Planning Commission, there was some reference made to the purpose of the, the dogs that you're breeding. Was there, aren't they bred for a specific purpose or for some?
Yes, yes. We, we have, we have, over the past couple, three years, we have had requests for people who have severe allergy problems, people who live in, in, in a more of a confined situation, condominiums, townhouses and so on like that, who need dogs that they prefer not to have much shedding. Our dogs are in that category. The F1Bs are hypoallergenic, non-shed, or basically non-shed. Some are looking for dogs that can be used for therapy purposes, and these dogs meet that criterion, and oftentimes, you know, for somebody who has that kind of a need, they will send a trainer or some expert in the field of training that dog for that particular task, you know, to come out and help to choose the puppy. So, yes, we, we do. We do encourage people, you know, budget issues are always there, that they check SPCA, they check, you know, rescue and so on like that. If that doesn't meet their criterion, then we are definitely available.
Other questions? I just have one. There are eight conditions up here. You've studied them closely, and they are acceptable, and you have no problem with them?
Except the one on barking. I say that tongue-in-cheek. I've never seen a dog that, at least none of my dogs, I can prevent from barking, but they're not a nuisance. And plus the fact that we have some very, very good neighbors, and, and they also have dogs, and I think they understand and so on like that. But we do, we do our best to control the barking.
So the conditions are okay?
The conditions are, are fine.
Okay.
To follow up on that, so what we're saying is that condition, or is it number five, as long as the barking isn't classified as a nuisance, they can, the dogs can bark, right? Okay.
Okay. Thank you. That's okay.
I guess, to be really honest about it, I was more concerned about number six, about how you train them. But mine don't play by those rules.
Well, to be honest, I may, I may fudge a little bit on that one. But basically, you know, we, we try to have the dogs, especially in the wintertime, it's much, much easier because it's darker earlier, to get them fed, get them down, and so on like that. I have a hard time convincing my Irish setters of, of number six, but we're working on it.
Any other questions? Thanks, sir.
Yes, thank you.
All right. We'll now conduct a public hearing on a conditional use permit 02-15 for James and Susan Brown for a kennel. This property is located at 719 Barley Lane. Property is identified with property identification number 61-A-23 in the Back Creek Magisterial District. Is there anyone here who would like to speak either for or against this conditional use All right. Seeing no one, close the public hearing. This is Back Creek.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to thank Mr. and Mrs. Brown for the hospitality when I visited them to inspect this facility and to check out the proposed CUP. I was truly impressed by the amount of thought that you've put into this process and the facilities that you have there. And to speak to number five, I figure that all the dogs are out there, and if there's something that could cause a dog to bark, it's a stranger coming up and walking around their area. But I, I did not hear any of that. If we looked at the, the aerial that Mr. Chairman showed you, you can see that the houses are very sparse and, and not near there at all, but I haven't heard any complaints, I haven't got any reports from any of the neighbors saying that there has been or could be a problem with the barking or a nuisance created by the CUP. So with that being said, I would move for approval of the conditional use permit number 02-15 of James and Susan Brown.
A motion to approve? Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second, but Supervisor Fisher, discussion? Hearing done. Supervisor Ranson?
Yes.
Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Chairman votes aye, and the conditional use permit 02-15 is approved. Next is another public hearing on rezoning 05-15 Hyatt Run Condos, whoops, LLC submitted by Gray Wolf Incorporated. And Supervisor DeHaven?
Mr. Chairman, I need to abstain, potential conflict of interest. Thank you, sir.
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is a request to rezone three acres from the RA Rural Areas District to the RP Residential Performance District with a couple of proffers. As you mentioned, the property is located on the east side of Martinsburg Pike Route 11, just south of Old Charlestown Road. Highlighted on the screen to your left, you can see the property as a whole, and to the east side, to the right-hand side, the three acres are included. The property is currently zoned RP to the, to the west, if you will, fronting on Route 11, and is part of the recently approved Hyatt Run Condominium Project. If I can focus in on just the three acres that you can see there to the right of the RP zoning, the generalized development plan highlights that further, and I tried to emphasize that with a red boundary. So we're just talking about the three acres immediately to the east of the current RP zoning. This will be added to the Hyatt Run Condominium Project that is currently zoned and approved. Now, this request is relatively unique, and it is an RP residential performance request, but the proffers limit the actual development of the site. No residential buildings will be constructed on the three acres. In addition, no additional density will be gained from adding this three acres into the property. All RP users would be excluded, other RP users. The exception to that being a couple of items that are listed in the proffer statement, the community center, office, parking, garages, and open space and recreational amenities. And that's the, the meat, if you will, of why this request is in front of you, because it would accommodate additional open space and recreational amenities associated with the Hyatt Run Condominium Project. So again, the applicant's proffer statement includes that public trail system commitment. No impacts are anticipated with this particular request, and no additional issues were identified through the Planning Commission's review of this request. One thing I will note, that I provided an additional proffer statement that is on your dais here this evening, following the Planning Commission's approval and following the agenda going on out, the applicant wanted to clarify one item, so I've no real substance to the meat of the proffer statement, and I highlighted it for you, which just recognizes that the minor editorial change allows for the public trail system not to be open to the public as a whole until the development has actually occurred. So we're very comfortable with that and that additional request, but I did want to point that out because that October 20th proffer statement with the additional five words would be what you would be approving here this evening with the request. So the Planning Commission recommended approval. We're seeking a board decision this evening. Mr. Gary Oats is here representing the application. Should you have any questions of him?
Questions, the staff? I just have one. The part that is already rezoned and the parcel is requested to be rezoned, have they always been separate parcels? Somebody doing a boundary line adjustment, or does somebody own a long skinny lot?
Good question. The three acres has been boundary line adjusted from the adjacent property into the Hyatt Run Condominium Project. The two property owners have been working together recently and have come to an agreement, and that boundary line adjustment did occur, taking the three acres from the property to the, to the east and bring it into the Hyatt Run Condominium Project.
So maybe I need to ask the applicant, but I would assume the applicant acquired the three acres to make his site more developable.
Again, it would not allow any additional residential uses, nor does it allow any additional residential density, but it provides greater opportunities with the recreational amenities. The applicant has also talked about providing additional parking and perhaps in the form of garages too, within that three acres. That, again, is how the proffer statement has been differentiated.
Answer my question. Thank you.
We will be seeing the adjacent property coming in front of you in a couple of weeks too, as another rezoning coming forward.
Questions, the staff? Did the applicant wish to speak?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Gary Oats with Gray Wolf, representing the applicant. Two items, one, the three acres tonight that we're bringing before you, there is zero density. It's mainly to expand the recreational amenities of the development. If it's not approved, the development can still occur. However, on this three acres, there's plans for a swimming pool, community garden, tennis courts, just to make it a better development. Site plan's already been submitted to planning, showing those items, and of course, it's subject to being approved once this item's been taken care of. And then the other item is about the proffer change. That was just to clarify, since the trail's being built in phases, that it would not be open to the public until it was actually completed, and that was more from a safety concern, just to clarify that that's when it would occur. And be happy to answer any questions.
So there's no way the three acres can ever be a separate partial rezoned RP?
No, sir. It's combined right now with the 10 acres previously.
Appreciate it.
It's all one parcel.
Other questions of the applicant? Thanks, sir. Now conduct a public hearing on rezoning 05-15 Hyatt Run Condos LLC submitted by Gray Wolf Incorporated to rezone three acres from RA Rural Areas District to RP Residential Performance District with proffers. This property is located on the eastern side of Martinsburg Pike Route 11, just before Old Charlestown Road Route 761. Property is identified with property identification numbers 44-A-17 in the Stonewall Magisterial District. Is there anyone here who would like to speak either for or against this rezoning? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. This is Stonewall. You have abstained. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I would recommend approval of rezoning 05-15.
All right. We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second, but Supervisor Hess, discussion? Hearing done. Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Supervisor Ranson?
Yes.
Chairman votes aye, and the motion passes. Rezoning 05-15 is approved. Next is another rezoning public hearing, 09-15 Artillery Business Center submitted by Peony Associates. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As you noted, this is a rezoning to modify proffers on the Shady Elm property, known as Artillery previously, and previously rezoned, rezoning number 07-08. Following that rezoning, there was, there were, rather, negotiations going on in the property to try and continue Renaissance Drive through the parcel to an intersection with Shady Elm Road. You see some of that coming forward in the draft proffers to you now. On the screen to your left, you can see the property outlined. Now, when it was previously rezoned, it was a single parcel, however, subsequent to that, it was broken into the two parcels, the smaller of which being approximately 17 acres and the larger being approximately 40 acres. However, this rezoning considers both with the proffers. In brief summary, the proffer modification you have before you, which is the same that was reviewed by the Planning Commission, is the $250,000 cash proffer that was previously proffered has been removed. The additional right lane on northbound Shady Elm has been removed. A commitment to enter into revenue sharing agreement to provide local match for the completion of Renaissance Drive from where it ends currently on the other side of the railroad tracks has been added. There's a limitation of one building permit per parcel. Either, on either parcel, the addition or request of a second building permit would trigger the need for that revenue sharing agreement to be put in place. The right-of-way dedication along Shady Elm Road has been removed due to the fact that that right-of-way has already been dedicated. The right-of-way obligation across parcel 74A-68, which you may know as the Carbaugh property directly south of this property, has been removed. That has not been completed. Five-year limitation on warehouse and distribution has been removed due to the fact of the amount of time that's passed since the original rezoning, and internal access road proffer's been removed due to redundancy with the ordinance. Now, at the Planning Commission meeting, we noted that the county attorney had issues with proffer 2.2.1, concerns regarding contract language, which bluntly, he's better equipped to describe than me, since they're fairly legal in nature, but they speak to how the wording should be regarding the commitment to enter revenue sharing. I know, and I know that's been in process to work on that since the Planning Commission. There was a note about the signature authority, which I believe has been resolved, and that there, the word proposed needs to be removed from the title of the proffer statement. The most up-to-date comment we have from VDOT on this application is that they're cautiously satisfied, which is actually an upgrade from a previous draft of the proffers. So, so that was to the good. The Planning Commission did recommend approval of this request. However, they did note that the board should consider some form, some form of timeline, because there was concern regarding how long it could potentially take to enter into the revenue sharing agreement and what that might do regarding the availability of the funds. Now, we had come seeking a board supervisor's decision. Following the public hearing, however, is my understanding that the applicant may be requesting a tabling, so hesitant to go into too much detail. I know that the proffer language has been discussed ever since the Planning Commission. I have not received a new proffer statement for your consideration, so what you have in front of you is the same that was considered by the Planning Commission. So any concerns they or the county attorney had at that time remain in force, because that is the only proffer statement we have to work off of right now. With that, I can take any questions you may have. Mr. Sowers is here on behalf of the applicant.
Questions, the staff? Mr. Sowers, would you like to speak? Where are you? Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Patrick Sowers with Peony Associates. To follow up on what Mr. Bishop said, we do, would like to request a two-week tabling of the application specifically for the purpose of, as he pointed out, the Planning Commission made the recommendation to approve, but with the desire to expedite the timing for the agreement. We'd like to postpone the application for a period of two weeks, provide time to finalize that agreement with the county for the revenue sharing for Renaissance Drive.
Before we deal with that, is there any questions of the applicant? Thinking about this, because I got some wind of the fact that it might happen, I don't, I heard that some people would want the public hearing to be continued. I don't think I want to take a motion and vote on a motion within the public hearing. So I think the motion, if, if it's acceptable, should come before the public hearing, then we will have the public hearing, and we will continue the public hearing. Makes the most sense to me. Mr. Williams, do you agree with that?
That works.
So, we did advertise a public hearing. We will start it. If there is a motion to continue, we will leave the public, public hearing open until we dispose of it. So what's your pleasure on the request to postpone a final decision for two weeks?
I would move that, we move on that request, but certainly not circumvent the public hearing process.
Yes. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Mr. Who?
Hess.
Mr. Hess makes the second. Discussion?
Question. Two weeks, 14 days, it looks like will be 15 days. So our 11th meeting is rescheduled to the 12th.
So we want to make a date specific?
Yes.
Motion and a second agreeable?
Yes, sir.
It's done. Thank you. We ready to vote?
Chairman, if I may, we're in discussion. I just want to ask the board's indulgence on this. We have been trying to cobble something together for some time now. We have been trying to cobble something together for some time now, and today, we just got the point, we just didn't feel that it was right to try to share with you the Planning Commission's recommendations and some other modifications that might have been made to that. We didn't feel that would be appropriate to do that to the board tonight, and so that's why we've all agreed that this tabling, putting it forward to November 12th, to give everybody time to put it in one neat package that could go up or down, so.
So we will vote on a motion that postpones the final decision and continues the public hearing started tonight until December 12th, right?
November 12th.
Oh, sorry. Ready to vote? All's in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Okay, that's behind us. Now, we'll start the public hearing. A rezoning request, 09-15 Artillery Business Center, submitted by Peony Associates to revise proffers associated with rezoning 07-08. This revision relates specifically to the transportation properties, proffers. The properties are located east and adjacent to Shady Elm Road, approximately 4,500 feet south of the intersection of Shady Elm Road and Apple Valley Drive. The properties are identified with property identification numbers 75-A-1, 75-A-1F, in the Back Creek Magisterial District. Is there anyone here who would like to speak either for or against rezoning 09-15? Name Magisterial District in three minutes, please.
Lane Dunn, Red Bud. This is just a question. The proposal called for a $250,000, what I believe is a proffer reduction? If that's the case, my question to the applicant would be, what was the purpose of the proffer reduction, since that will be money that will cost the county? Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing no one, we will now consider the public hearing postponed until November 12th.
Continued.
Continued.
Wrong again?
Continued.
Continued, I'm sorry. It's getting late. Next, planning item. Discussion. Anyone who did wish to have additional comments is encouraged to do that at the next meeting, and Mr. Dunn, somebody should try to get you an answer. Discussion of the I-81 Distribution Park Stonewall Industrial Park, discussion. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is a site plan review for the project that is called the I-81 Distribution Park Stonewall. Now, this site is located within the Stonewall Industrial Park at the corner of Welltown Road and Tyson Drive. Now, this site plan is being presented to you due to its implications on the planned route for Route 37. The site plan, there's a copy of the site plan sheet in your agenda, contains a 330,000 square foot building that is within the path of 37. So this is the location map for the property. It has the site plan overlaid onto it with the planned route for 37, which is shown in red. As you can see, 37 is planned to go within the area for that building. As I stated, this site plan is presented as an informational item due to the implications on 37 with the construction of this site. So with that, I would be glad to any questions, and I believe the applicant is here as well, if you have any questions.
Questions for staff? Did the applicant wish to speak? Well, just, I can't pass up the opportunity to say, sometimes you understand why people do what they do, but it doesn't make it any less disappointing. Obviously, we're gonna have to come up with a different plan. Any other comments? Then we'll move on to a discussion of the ordinance amendment in reference to the supplementary use regulations setback extensions. Please go ahead.
Again, thank you. Back in 2011, the RP, which is the Residential Performance District, was updated regarding some of the setbacks and the dimensional requirements. What was introduced were some setbacks for unroof decks and structures. With that revision, the allowance for extensions into setbacks within the supplementary use regulations, regulation section, was changed to eliminate the RP and the R4 districts. Now, since the RP district dimensional requirements also apply to the R5 district, the R5 should have been taken out of that section at that time, however, it was overlooked. So what should have happened is that only the RA and the MH1, which is the agricultural and the mobile home community districts, should have been left within that supplementary use regulation. So the minor revision before you removes the R5 from the supplementary use regulation portion to ensure that the R5 developments, which are your Lake Holidays, Lake Frederick, Shawnee Land and Mountain Falls Park, all utilize the RP deck and stoop setback extension as was intended. And I did include a copy of the RP district setbacks, just to give you an example of what it looks like. It was included in your agenda. So the DRC reviewed this, and they agreed with the changes. It was sent forward to the Planning Commission. The commission discussed this at their September meeting, and so tonight, we are seeking direction from the board as to whether this is ready for public hearing. I would be glad to answer any questions.
Questions? If there are none, is it ready for a public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, four years have passed. Remind me why or what was the purpose of this, especially with the setback reductions for RA? I just, I don't know, when I read it this time, it seemed, it was a little strange for RA.
Well, the RA setback extension has been in the ordinance for probably 20 years. It's traditionally called the one-third rule. It's, that's, it allows stoops, decks, bay windows, things like that, to have a little bump out into a setback. I wasn't around when that was adopted years ago.
I guess my, there seems to be an inconsistency with the MH1 versus RA. I can understand why it might be needed in one, but in the other, it doesn't seem to...
The RA one-third rule really helps with smaller, non-conforming lots that may want to do some type of a bump out. It's not really used for your traditional five and above.
Thank you. That was the piece missing. Thanks.
Any questions? What's your pleasure?
Chairman, I move for approval.
Send to public hearing?
Public hearing.
You have a motion, to send it to public hearing? Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Fisher. Discussion. Hearing done. All's in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Off to public hearing it goes. Next is a resolution in reference to rail access funding application for Trex. Mr. Bishop.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As noted in the memorandum accompanying the request, Trex Corporation is seeking the county support for a $300,000 grant application from the state for rail access funding. This is similar to the VDOT highway access funding, with the exception that the locality is not the applicant, the actual corporation is the applicant, and as such, we are only the county that is giving support, as opposed to submitting the application and being responsible for it. They are putting in a roughly $2.7 million project, which is expected to produce approximately 90 jobs and remove, I forget the number, about 155, and put about 155 additional rail car loads of material, which we like, because that means they're not on our road system. So the rail spur itself is within the county, being on the south side of Shawnee Drive.
Questions, staff? Supervisor Lofton?
Maybe you can, maybe you can't. 150 rail cars, how many trucks would that eliminate off the roadway system?
It really depends on the material, but...
Ballpark.
At least 300.
As I was saying, yeah.
Yeah.
Quite a few.
A lot.
Other questions? Thanks, sir. What's board's pleasure on the resolution?
Chairman, I move for adoption of the resolution and support.
All right, we have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Lofton. Discussion. Hearing done. All's in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? The resolution is approved. Next is another resolution, a revenue sharing application support for revenue sharing programs for 2016, 2017. Go ahead, Mr. Bishop.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is our annual time to apply for revenue sharing funds. I know there's been a fair amount of discussion about whether or not the revenue sharing pot itself is going to dwindle away, however, now that a discussion is applicable to this year. We are applying for the full amount that we're allowed to apply for, which is $10 million. The first two projects, you will recognize from our discussions when you are considering potentially transferring funds from the Russell 150 projects, which subsequently was not done. There is a map on the screen, although at this scale, I apologize, it's probably not terribly helpful to you, so I'll try to zoom into each project to aid a little in that discussion. The first project is Route 11 North, southbound side between Exit 317 and Route 37. That is a project that previously has some revenue sharing dollars on it. It also has some VDOT safety funds. It adds an additional southbound lane between Exit 317 and Route 37, as well as intersection improvements at Welltown Road and Route 11, and we are proposing to apply for $500,000 for that project.
So does this mean that you think the total project is just a million?
The total project is not a million, no. The shortfall, the current need, is a million. The second project, seems like she gave me an extra dot on here. That's the wrong map. That would explain it. The second project, and I apologize, is for $400,000. I apologize, $550,000, we had to bump it up, depending on what happens with the artillery project, for Renaissance Drive. Now, that is Renaissance Drive connecting Shady Elm, Shady Elm Road and Route 11 South. It is related to the artillery project, which you have tabled. There are current revenue sharing dollars on that project, however, they have, that's gone on for some time, and VDOT's cost estimate has been revised upward. In addition to that, since there is some possibility that we would be looking at a right-of-way purchase, it's been further elevated upward to protect against that eventuality. The application amount would be $550,000 to bring us to the full 50% of that expected $2.4 million project. Now, granted, that's a conservative $2.4 million estimate, but that is what it is. The final project, I'm rather excited about. You may recall from back when the Willow Run rezoning was done, that a key cornerstone of that project was to extend Juber Early Drive from the city out to Route 37 near Rock Harbor Golf Course with an interchange on Route 37. Frankly, we've been kind of bugging those guys for a couple of years to try and get in with the revenue sharing project, because we did feel like it would be an excellent application for a regional improvement. They are now interested. So the remaining $8,950,000 for which we could apply, we are requesting to apply for and apply toward that project. That is just south of a full 50% by about $100,000 of that, of that project. So we do have that request from them, and they are eager to move forward.
On the subject of the Transportation Committee's end result, I assume it was approval?
We did. Apologize, it was recommended for approval, yes?
Earlier this week.
Your pleasure, the board.
We've approved the resolution.
All right, we have a motion to approve the resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor DeHee. Discussion. Hearing done. All's in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? The resolution is approved. Are there any board liaison reports? All right, then we'll move on to citizen comments. This portion of the meeting, the board sets aside for citizen comments on other topics. Is there anyone here who would like to address the board? If so, please come forward, give your name, Magisterial District. Let me to your comments to three minutes, please.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Stan Crockett, and I'm a resident of Stonewall Magisterial District. I'm a citizen volunteer appointed by the Board of Supervisors, serving on the Frederick County Sanitation Authority Board of Directors. There has been information in a recent media article concerning the FCSA that is simply incorrect, and I feel it is my obligation to this board, to the citizens of Frederick County, and the FCSA to set the record straight. I have served on the FCSA Board of Directors for eight years and on several committees. I am currently Vice Chair of the Board and Chairman of the Personnel Committee, and as such, very involved in all HR and personnel issues with the authority, to include the recent resignation of the Engineer Director. I am not aware of any campaign to remove any current or past employees of the FCSA, and to suggest otherwise is misleading at best. Decisions regarding the operation and management of the FCSA are made by a Board of Directors, not any single individual, for obvious reasons. No individual has legal authority to speak for, negotiate for, or in any other way represent the FCSA with any entity. For any individual other than a Director of the FCSA, following the policies, objectives, and authorized by the full FCSA Board of Directors, to negotiate on the FCSA's behalf is unacceptable. Such action could potentially put the citizens of Frederick County at risk of increased costs by damaging established relationships and entering negotiations or making promises which cannot be kept. Mr. Chairman, I want to assure you that the FCSA Board of Directors is fully committed to providing the best possible service at the lowest cost to all Frederick County citizens, but we will do so by following appropriately sanctioned business practices. Thank you for your attention and the opportunity to speak.
Seeing no one, we'll close the citizen comment portion of the meeting. Board of Supervisors comments, are there any?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I know the hours, hours rather late, but I do have a couple of items that I wanted to mention. One is, a member of the Board of Supervisors were made aware of instances of extraordinary service rendered by county employees through our Employee of the Month Award Program. On the opposite end of the spectrum, I, and I assume each of the other board members, occasionally receive complaints from citizens where the service rendered from a county employee was not up to the citizens' expectation. I, and I assume we, sometimes lose track of the fact that day in and day out, we have county employees who deliver exemplary service that does not rise to the level of an Employee of the Month citation, because it's a routine part of their job. I mention this because last week, my elderly mother-in-law, who lives with my wife and me, experienced a medical emergency that led us to call 911 for assistance. First, the 911 operator handled the call effectively and efficiently, and the ambulance was dispatched from the Clearbrook Station, arriving promptly. Then the two EMTs on the ambulance, Lieutenant Hudson Price and firefighter Eli Carr, handled the situation in an extremely professional, courteous, and in a very caring manner. My wife and I could not have been more impressed, and I thank Price and Carr and the other employees who many times do their jobs under very difficult situations. Next thing, and I know it's been a while since our last meeting, but back on September the 17th, I attended, along with the county administrator and a couple of staff members, a seminar at the Lord Fairfax Community College dealing with the inland port, and I was really impressed with the information that we received. In particular, wanted to take note of a panel of individuals from area businesses who utilize the facility, and they stressed the importance to their business, either in locating here or remaining here, the importance of the inland port. Just bear with me, just two more short items. The week of October 12th to 16th was National School Lunch Week, and I had the privilege, along with Gainesboro member of the school board, Mike Lake, to have lunch at Frederick County Middle School, Jameswood High School, and Apple Pie Ridge Elementary School, and cafeterias are a lot different than when I was in school, and I just wanted to work about that, quite enjoyable. We had a good time. And then the last item, I just wanted to mention, last Thursday, down at Charando High School, the kids' voting event was held, and I just want to commend all those people who support and sponsor and are involved with that program. I think it's a very valuable endeavor. Candidates from Clark County, Warren County, and Frederick County were present for the middle school students who were... middle school students who were participating, and I think it's something that really helps teach civic responsibility and community involvement, and just want to make note of that very worthwhile program. Thank you.
Any other Board of Supervisors' comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Lofton?
I know that I receive a number of concerned citizens, phone calls, emails, about the state of the roads in their neighborhood, and I keep telling them that the roads have reduced responsibility, and that maybe we could do something to lobby our delegates and senators at the state level to find a way to expand that pot of money that's utilized for maintenance of roadways. So, after talking with many of them, I thought about and would like to propose with the board's concurrence, and I would like to look at having a transportation or status of the road forum and invite our delegates, Minchu, LaRocque, Delegate-elect Collins, Vogel, even Congresswoman, yes, help me out here. And their Commonwealth Transportation Board member, Mr. Dixon Whitworth, to a forum and let the citizens come out and express their concern to helpfully engage the delegates when they go to this current session to see if there's a way that we can actually expand that pot of money. And so, again, and I've talked to Delegate Minchu, talked to Delegate-elect Collins, they are more than happy to do that, and so, like I say, with the board's concurrence, I would like to work with the county administrator to try to set up that particular forum so that the citizens before the legislators go down to Richmond, have the opportunity to express their desire to find a way to make more money available for maintenance items.
You know, I lose track of time, but sometime in the last twelve months, the chamber tried. And the reason I know that is our Commissioner Dixon Whitworth and myself were to sit on the panel, and there was so little interest, they had to cancel it. It's like a good idea, but I don't know if you can get it done. And I think the rest of the board members probably should weigh in on your idea. It's a noble effort, but the chamber, they may be willing to resurrect it again and try again, but there was so little interest, they had to cancel it.
And I wasn't aware of that, but I thought...
You have a venue, you have to have like an idea about who might show and how many, you know, because you got to have a big enough place, not too little a place, and so, maybe most citizens would say, I didn't know they tried, but I just, I provide that as a fact.
Okay.
Dixon and I went to great difficulty to try to prepare, and then at the last moment, it bombed.
And I'm just wondering if, the chamber certainly is a good partner to have that kind of discussion, but I just wondered if maybe if we, as a body, showed that we had an interest in that, that maybe it'd bring out more people, and I don't know that it would, but I just thought that it might be an opportunity to let the citizens come in, give their concerns to our delegates before they go down to Richmond, to express to them their desire to help make that pot of money bigger and to help us out with some of the conditions that we have in some of these roads that have unpaved roads that have been that way for years and years and years, and it don't seem to be moving up on the list very fast, if at all. So, maybe...
You've heard Supervisor Lofton's idea. What's the rest of you think?
Mr. Chairman, like Supervisor Lofton, I dare say somewhere in the four-to-one, five-to-one, I get calls about problems with roads, in particular, unpaved roads in my district. In fact, I was out a couple of weeks ago on Hollow Road, used to be in the Back Creek District. Now, I know why it's not in mine. I don't want to deal with it anymore. Anyhow, I happened to be out there in the afternoon when a school bus came along and had to back up about thirty yards into a driveway just so the school bus could pass. And in addition, the ditches have been scoured so deep with water running down, they really present a hazard. The runoff from the road is adding silt to Lake Isaac out there, which the residents just paid to have dredged, and these calls, I just don't seem to be able to offer these folks any hope. They're not on the immediate list, and basically telling them in their lifetime, they're probably not going to see pavement on those roads. And if nothing else, I think we need an outlet. I mean, I've got a list, I'm not sure how long it is, of people that have called me over the last couple of years regarding roads that I dare say would turn out and would get their neighbors to turn out.
Any else?
I get the same calls, Mr. Chairman. Same thing. Mr. Lofton and I, Mr. Hess, we've been talking about it.
Get enough calls that if they came out, it would be a good forum.
It would be a good forum.
A lot of the calls expect you to take care of the problem for them, and you can't.
Right.
I don't know. Maybe you just, we just have to try and see. It is a lot of work for somebody, and history would indicate the odds aren't good, and so I just thought I should put it out there, and if you want to try, who knows? Might get lucky.
And I can certainly appreciate the efforts that have been made before, but I just felt like that if it's at our level, that maybe that would generate a little more interest, and I'm more than happy to put as much time and effort into it as possible to make it as successful as possible.
There are consensus that there's support for Supervisor Lofton's efforts, and that we should go down this road.
I'd like, at least maybe we work with county staff, administrator's office, just to see, first of all, what the logistical obstacles might be. I mean, we may decide that, given other things that are going on, that maybe it wouldn't be worthwhile, but I think we at least ought to have some discussions with staff to see just how we might go about this, where a location might be and examination, rather than just dismiss it out of hand, or rather than just say, oh, yes, we're definitely going to do it. I think it certainly deserves some further investigation.
Agree with that?
I'm okay with that. I think Mr. Bishop would like to speak to the question, if that's all right.
I'm sorry, I didn't see you raise your hand, but...
That's okay, that's okay. I'm surreptitious, my finger. I never get these calls. I don't know what you're talking about. No.
Can I have your cellphone number again, please?
It's gotten out there from time to time. One fellow told me he was going to put it on a sign in his yard, but anyhow, I would like to note that perhaps Transportation Committee would be an appropriate body to spearhead such a meeting, if you so desire. We are fortunate, we have a new Public Information Officer in the county right now, so I'm sure she could do a very nice job of helping us set up a venue and all that sort of thing. And frankly, it's a project that, given, we can get multiple utilities out of it, is what I'm suggesting, in terms of not only taking in information in terms of a complete basis or feedback basis, but also it's an opportunity to distribute information, which I would expect VDOT would also like the opportunity to participate in. So, anything we can do to be of assistance in that, I think it's a worthwhile effort. Just let us know.
I think Mr. Bishop may have just volunteered you. Are you willing to assume the assignment?
I think, yes, we're willing to do that. What I would suggest is, you know, we've had groups at Transportation, Hollow Road folks came in one day.
Yeah.
You know, it really is, it's a very serious situation. I get these calls all the time. I would probably suggest that we not try to do it at a Transportation Committee meeting.
Right. No, I agree.
It's tough enough for family folks to come out in the evenings. I would suggest this room in early, mid-evening, probably, you know, similar timeframes to what we do board in, maybe starting a little bit earlier in going. But it's tough for families, by the time they can get home, get their families home, feed them, you know, homework, et cetera. It's tough for folks to get out, but if we don't try, we'll never know.
I agree. I was not suggesting that it be on the Transportation Committee's normal schedule, simply that Transportation Committee has a sensible role.
With the apparent significant interest of the board and Mr. Lofton's suggestion, the chair assigns it to the Transportation Committee to proceed post haste.
Thank you, sir.
And one other thing, I was looking at, and like I say, I've talked to our delegates, I think the first part of December would be a good timeframe for this to happen because that gives them the opportunity, if in fact there's any action that they think needs to be taken, gives them a chance to take that back to the staff down at the state level and maybe formulate something that they can put through legislature. So, it needs to be done, like I say, the first of December seemed to be the timeframe that they were talking about, but be most beneficial to them.
That seems reasonable in terms of timeframe and putting an event together, get it advertised, all that fun stuff. Yes?
Thank you. Anything else? Board of Supervisors' comments?
Mr. Chairman, move or adjourn?
A motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Lofton. All is in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The meeting is adjourned.